First, order of business, that's a pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll do a quick roll call of Planning Commission members. We'll start with District One.
Jason Wienerman, present.
All right, District Two?
Dave Bentrood, present.
All right, District Three is Jason Crowe, I am here. District Four, Sean Blackburn will not be here tonight. District Five, Mike Pearl, here. Thanks, Mike. And then we have two at-large members, we'll start with Tara.
Tara Osnorff, here.
And Rich.
Our Rich Blinkish.
All right, very good. And then we have our, our, planning, or, sorry, Commissioner member, Persky here, representing the County Commissioners at their next meeting, so. With that, we will go to Agenda Item Number One, and that's to consider a plat entitled Funk Estates consisting of three lots submitted by Francis and Elaine Funk of Socks Center, Minnesota. According to Stearns County Subdivision Ordinance Number 230 and Land Use and Zoning Ordinance 439, the property is in part of the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter, lying north of 442nd Street and east of 410th Avenue in Section 33 of Socks Center Township. Property address is 40786 442nd Street in Socks Center. So, real quick roll call then of members who were able to visit the site, we'll start with you, Jason.
I was there when we first did the property division.
All right, very good. Dave?
Yes, I did visit.
All right, similar to Jason Wienerman, I was there the first time. We'll go, Mike, yes. Tara?
I was there the first time.
All right, and Rich?
Yeah, no, I visited.
All right, very good. With that, Heidi, if you want to take us through the staff report.
All right, so this is a three-lot plat located in Socks Center Township entitled Funk Estates. The plat consists of 14.33 acres total, property is owned residential five. Minimum lot size is met for that zoning district. They have identified septic sites for each lot. Lot Three contains the existing building site, and those buildings meet all the setback requirements. There's no wetlands on the property and no feedlots within 700 feet. The plat is on 442nd Street and 410th Avenue, which are both township roads. No stormwater management is required. The plat's not within any overlay districts or areas of concern. Socks Center Township did review and approve the preliminary plat in September, and the County Plating Committee reviewed the plat and recommended it on to the Planning Commission with the following conditions. One, a declaration of restriction stating that in order to protect the two soil treatment areas for septic use, they shall be maintained in an undisturbed and natural state. Number two, a subdivision agreement stating that construction site best management practices are required to stake and rope off the septic sites during ground disturbing activity, and a notice that the plat is located within an agricultural area and construction expansion operation of feedlots and other ag uses are permitted. A water supply verification for nitrates is required. At the time, we needed a revised preliminary plat, that's been done and completed and is included in your packets. And then the $500 park dedication fee is required, and that has been paid. And that's all that I have.
All right, very good, Heidi. Are the applicants here on this one? If you want to come up and, once you have a chance, make sure the green light is on on the microphone, and you can, don't mind stating your name and address for the record?
Yes, Elaine Funk, 40786 442nd Street, Socks Center, Minnesota, 56378.
All right, thanks Elaine. Anything you want to add to Heidi's staff report?
Nope, sounds correct.
All right, very good. Any questions by Planning Commission members for the applicant or staff? All right, pretty straightforward. Is there anyone here from, well, let me real quickly explain, public hearing portion of it, so there's some folks in the room here tonight. We will hit on every agenda item, a time for public comment, so if you are here from the public and want to comment on any of the tonight's agenda items, once we get to that public hearing portion, if you just want to come up to the front, this taller podium, we'll just go one at a time. We try to keep it relatively condensed to like two minutes or so, but state your name and address for the record, and then state your thoughts, concerns, opinions, and then we'll move on to the next one. So, if anyone is here from the public on this one, feel free to come up. All right, otherwise...
Move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion by Rich to close the public hearing, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. Mike, all those in favor of closing public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, public hearing closed. Any further discussion on this one before we go to finding a fact?
I just, not a big question, just to help me understand. On the preliminary plat, there's sewer sites that are identified on multiple, multiple sewer sites on each parcel. Are those proposed sewer sites, or?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Wienerman, yeah, so with a plat, any time a new residential lot's created, they need to identify two areas within each lot that are suitable for septic use. So they did have a septic designer went out and did soil borings to verify that the soils are appropriate, and that's what's identified. So the only actual one out there is where it says existing sewer on Lot Three. All the other, I think there's seven of them out here, are all just proposed, they've been evaluated, could have a septic there.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
That was a good question, though, I wasn't sure when they did the actual soil borings to test that, if they were just proposed, you know, hypothetically, or if they tested, so that's good. All right, anything else? All right, we can move to findings of fact. So number one, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Let's say the plating is consistent with zoning ordinance number 439, Section 9.7, and then subdivision ordinance number 230, Sections Five and Eight. This is allowed within the ordinance. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county listed applicable sections?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I believe it is consistent with the living goals. Number one, collaborate with cities and townships to maintain sustainable growth patterns, and number two, manage the impacts of growth and development on the county's rural character and natural resources.
All right, very good, thanks Jason. Three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood?
Mr. Chair, I think the proposal is compatible with the existing neighborhood, as there are a number of additional lots within the area.
All right, very good, thanks Tara. Four, how has the applicant demonstrated that the standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied? There are some proposed conditions listed that would help to assure some of these items. Any other thoughts on that matter? All right, then we will go to five, any other issues pertinent to this matter?
Township approved.
Township approval, thank you, Rich. Anything else?
Plating committee.
Plating committee, approval and recommendation? Thank you, Dave. Plating commission. Good, anything else? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the two conditions.
All right.
I will second that.
All right, cool, thanks. Motion made by Mike, seconded by Rich to recommend approval, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so motion to recommend approval, we'll go to the County Commissioners Meeting, and that is the 20th of November.
Actually, for the plat, it won't go until we get these conditions all squared away and everything, so that will go to the board at a later date.
Later date.
TBD at this point.
Thank you, Heidi, appreciate it. Thanks Elaine.
Thank you.
All right. All right, applicant, Jerry's here, okay. Then we will go to Agenda Item Number Two, and that's to consider a rezoning request submitted by Jerry Coons of Clearwater, Minnesota, on behalf of Ronald, or, I said this wrong last time, I think.
Bartaszewski.
Bartaszewski, thank you, and I apologize again, of South Haven, Minnesota, according to Section 4.1 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to rezone approximately 42.8 acres from the Ag 40 zoning district to the residential R10 zoning district. The property is in, is in part of the north half of the southeast quarter in Section 30, south of 155th Street and west of 3rd Avenue in Linden Township. Property address is 15463 3rd Avenue, South Haven. Again, real quick roll call of members who visited the site, we'll start with you, Jason.
Here last month.
All right, Dave?
Yes, I did.
All right, I also was the last month attendee, that will go to Mike?
Yes, I did.
All right, Tara?
No.
All right, and Rich?
I was there.
Very good, thank you. We have our applicants here, so we'll go to, Heidi, won't you go to your staff report quickly, and I know this is kind of a recap from an agenda, and we started last month.
Yeah, so this was originally in front of the board last month to rezone the full parcel, 42.8 acres to residential 10. They have amended the request to rezone just 10 acres to residential 10 to get one additional residential building entitlement, rather than the three they would have gotten by rezoning the whole property. So on the map, you can see in red the area that they've proposed to rezone. The only thing that really has changed in the staff report as a result of that was the land evaluation site assessment score is at 67.5, I believe is like 70.4 before, when he wanted to rezone the whole piece, so it went down a couple points by bringing this down to 10 acres. But that was the only change from last month.
All right, thank you Heidi. Let me go back over this, any, well, we'll go to quick introduction of our applicants, sorry, I missed that, so if you guys don't mind stating your names and addresses for the record again.
Jerry Coons, 909 Isabella Avenue, Clearwater.
All right, thank you.
Rodden Bartaszewski, 15463 3rd Avenue, South Haven.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to add to Heidi's report?
No, I think she's pretty much got it covered.
All right, very good. Any questions by Planning Commission members for the applicants or staff on this one?
Jason Wienerman, you may not have thought about this yet, but do you have a proposed location for the new house? Have you thought about where you're going to put the house already?
You asked me?
Yeah, somebody.
I thought you said Jason. So where that tree line is, just to the east of there, right on top of a little hill there, I guess.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Further south a little bit. Right about there, yep.
All right, any other questions? Joe, go ahead.
Yes, last time we were looking at dividing it up and creating several lots and making them all R10. Now, we're going to go with just the one area that's in red that would be rezoned to R10, and so therefore then there would be a building ability to put in a, a, a house on that piece of property. Otherwise, the remainder of it then would not be allowed to have any development, is that correct?
The rest would not be able to have a home on it. Potentially, you could still do outbuildings, grain bit like that kind of thing on the remainder, potentially, but the home would have to be within the red area.
Any other questions before opening up the public hearing, so we can go to the public testimony on this one? If we do have correspondence, the last time, that's still is part of the record, just so if you have previously made statements, that is still part of the record here, but if any additional people want to make comments, you can come up. All right.
Good evening. I'll start off just by saying, nothing personal, this is just business, Earl Gregwire joining property. The first result on Google, if you search neighbors shutting down farms, is a how-to guide on attempt to circumnavigate existing laws and cause farming activities to cease near residents. I know it's been said, but I want to again remind you that it was only last year that Linden Township attempted to pass an ordinance that would effectively ban animal feedlots. Again, I would emphasize, in 2022, Linden Township tried to ban animal feedlots. The ordinance regarding the banning of feedlots was quote, "due to citizen complaints." In addition, residents have called in alleged animal abuse claims to the sheriff's office. Please try and sympathize with how frustrating it is to have a deputy come out and ask to investigate claims of animal abuse that have been imagined by neighbors just trying to cause hardship. Stearns County spent a year coming up the 2040 comprehensive zoning plan. Much effort and thought was put into it. This proposal does not fit that plan. Limited growth is not chopping off 10 acres at a time and shoehorning in houses between feedlots. Limited growth is following the plan to preserve agricultural land and remain A40. There are additional A40 allotments, using them will result in limited growth, chopping up agriculture properties into 10-acre parcels does not fit the plan. As being said, this will minimally affect agricultural land, as part of it is a forest. I would like to point out, the forest is a monocrop stand of pine trees, a tree that is native to Minnesota but not southern Stearns County by any stretch. A monocrop stand of pines is not a forest, it's a form of agriculture. Tree farms should be subject to the same protection as other farmland. We've been told to mind our own business, but this is our business. Our feedlot provides additional income to four Stearns County families and produces well over a million pounds of meat per year, well over. What precedent is set if we approve this rezoning? Should everyone just sell their allotments and come ask for another? If you approve agriculture to residential, even where it abuts multiple feedlots, there will be an absolute expectation that there will be continued approval for conversion of agriculture to residential land. I know it sounds great to let everyone do whatever they want on their own land, but these ordinances exist for a reason, to stifle conflict. Converting agricultural land that abuts feedlots to residential will create conflict, we've already saw it, it's happened. I would remind everyone that any parcels that adjoin the parcel, if rezoned, will be approved by the township for additional R10, that was what the township told me. This is not limited growth, and if approved, it will not be the beginning of notices from the county regarding rezoning, or, it will be the beginning of, sorry, notices from the county regarding rezoning, not yet, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here from the public on this item? Yeah, if anyone, yeah, if you want to come up, you can just make a line back here too, so, just so we have a sense of who all wants to speak, but go ahead if you want to state your name and address for the record.
I'm James Cantor, my address is different, I'm actually a planning and zoning administrator for Linden Township. So, I have been with the township for 16 years, so I just want to start by saying that in 16 years, I have never seen any hostility towards farmers. The, that was...
Yeah, you guys, well, yeah, we got to keep everything up here, yep.
So, I'll direct it to you guys. So what that was back in, that was a proposal to change an ordinance requiring a building for an animal, that wasn't to ban feedlots at all, and it was shot down. But, just to go over some stuff, I got a call from Jerry last week, and I'm lucky that it was right before the board meeting. I am an employee of Linden Township, so I cannot just come to these meetings, you know, without request from the board, but I'm glad that the county broadcasts meetings because I was able to watch the meeting and see everything that was there. So first off, what frustrated me was the hostility comment, there is no hostility towards farmers, I've never seen any hostility in 16 years towards farmers. And so, I'm not sure where that, that came from. Actually, it, you know, being pro-farmer, I actually helped Ray with a construction site permit a couple weeks ago, and I explained that he doesn't need a building permit, which saved him a thousand, a couple thousand dollars. I personally am very pro-farming, but, so I wanted to start out with that. Second, the rubber stamp comment, I never actually said rubber stamp at all in a conversation to Earl. I was asked about rubber stamping, and I said, "No, we meet the criteria set forth by the county and by the state." So I thought that I would add that in there as well. We cannot go to R1, just putting an R1, as you know, in the middle of an A40, that's not allowed. However, with limited growth, the only growth that is an option is to go from A40 to R10 because we don't utilize R20. So, the reason also that you're getting recommendations from Linden Township without us visiting is because, like I said, I'm an employee. Second of all, I do have a contact sheet that discusses rezoning, we only send in what we feel is going to meet the criteria. I have had eight contacts in the last, since we started recording contacts, in the last six months, I've had 11 contacts, three of those were spot zoning, so we actually discouraged that, and they didn't apply, they understood it, once we showed them the state website explaining that. But, you had a question at the last public hearing about notifications. We were just attending a legal seminar where the attorney recommended that the township does not notify when we're recommending body, we recommend by state law and procedures. So as a result, we don't recommend, you know, sending out a letter every time that somebody does it, and a good example is, I didn't get an email or a phone call or a letter regarding this meeting specifically, but I don't live, you know, 10 miles away. So, we did have also, Tom had contacted our attorney again and said, "Is this recommended?" It is 100% recommended not to notify when we're the recommending body, your guys' decision is what matters. I'm just paraphrasing this really quick, I'm trying to make it fast for you guys. Also, you had asked about Linden Township, Linden Township does have a comp plan, and so we 100% met our comp plan, because it does say limited growth in there. I spoke to Angie actually last week for about an hour, which was really nice, and she, she said that about four years ago, they had asked if we had one, somehow we didn't get the email, there was a miscommunication there, but we have a comp plan that was developed in 2002 and modified again in 2009, that again allows for limited growth from A40 to R10. And we're also looking at updating that, so that's coming in the future. But I think that's all I have, I'll just leave it short, I've got something if you want to include, or all the statements.
Yeah, very good, yeah, you can send it around, actually, we can... Yeah, very good, yeah, you can send it around, actually, we can send it down the table, so thank you.
Chair, wait, I've got a question.
Yes.
Say, you said that our, our 1 is not, uh, possible. Is there anything under R-10, can you do R-5?
We, we have it set for limited growth, not moderated, or moderate or concentrated growth, so under our interpretation, R-10 was all that it would be allowed.
Okay, 'cause I'm, I'm looking at this, changing this to R-10, and then what would be the future, the possibility of anything else happening there? That's what I'm concerned about.
The comp plan would have to change, so, it, it's only set for limited growth. We don't have moderate growth set there or concentrated growth, we do have that in other areas of the township though.
Very good, any other questions there? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, come on up.
Hi, Vicki Ledkey, and, uh, you want my address too?
Uh, yeah, just please.
Uh, 10,005 120th Street Northwest, South Haven.
Okay.
And so I own a little piece of parcel, closed down on Fifth Avenue. And so, um, uh, yeah, Jerry, we had talked about, uh, potentially selling over our, um, uh, what is it called, the entitlement?
Building entitlement, yeah.
Thank you, um, to Jerry, and it, it was a matter of, you know, what, what is actually the value and all of that stuff. But also too, um, just say, I thought it was interesting, um, we had talked a bit about, there actually already is a land entitlement on that property, and that belongs to then, uh, Mr. Bardaszewski. So, there actually is a building entitlement, so the fact that they, between the two of them, that they arranged it so that uh, he has life's estate, uh, why should that impact anything? You know, why should there be any, um, anything granted as a result of that, because that land does already have a building entitlement? Why should we be separating it to create another one? I guess was food for thought.
Okay, thank you. Joe, do you have a question?
No, I, I'm gonna, the question about that entitlement, but there is, uh, the, um, Mr. Bardaszewski's house is the one house that's on there, there's not an additional entitlement?
Correct, correct, so that's why, yeah, we were talking about, there already is a building entitlement, so I guess why are we even having this discussion? It's the fact that, because they had that agreement between the two of them, that he can live there until, um, at such a time.
But then he, he couldn't have put another house on there until?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, and then, and that's just, I mean, the way it is, and I guess, you know, there's other properties too, uh, where people have life's estate, and if that's your agreement, why, why separate land to create then a separate parcel, you know, to build on something that already has a building entitlement on it? And, and, and so that's why I'm just questioning, how, why should that impact then the rest of us? Because of their business decision?
All right, very good, thank you. Is anyone else here from the public on this, go ahead?
I figured everybody should say something, I'm Scott O'Connor, uh, Linden Township Supervisor, 16501 Fourth Avenue East. Um, I, I don't blame Jerry for wanting to build there, I mean, I mean, it's got about, you know, the potential of the world's greatest neighbors, I think most of them are here. But, you know, our recommendation came, I mean, as James said, you know, from the comprehensive plan of how it was laid out, the criteria was met, and that's where the recommendation came from. So, you know, like I said, we're, we're not, um, in, in, in the end, it's your guys' decision, but that's where the recommendation came from, so, thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else, thank you, keep coming up, and if anyone else wants to come speak, yeah, we'll just get a line right here.
Michelle Schreider, 248 155th Street, South Haven, Minnesota. So there has been, um, dispute with farms in that area, once the development of Hidden River that moved in. Um, I do have a folder of all the stuff that our family was put through when they moved in. So it is true. And I'm the upcoming farmer. And my father has life's estate, whom I'm buying the farm from, and we co-house. There isn't going to be another house. So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patty Osmus, and I live at 15521 County Road 44. I've had a month to understand my emotional reaction to this proposal being discussed. And let me say quite frankly, I am afraid. I'm afraid that by granting this variance, it opens the door to more variances being granted, until so many variances are granted, they become rubber stamped. I understand that one variance doesn't seem like a problem, but let me experience, explain my experience and my perspective. I was born and raised in St. Paul, near Maplewood, Oakdale, and Woodbury. In my youth, which really honestly wasn't that long ago, I could ride my bike over to a farm that raised Appaloosa show, show horses. One by one, I witnessed more and more farms being pushed out, being replaced by house after house after house. That raised, the place that raised the horses held out until they could no longer afford the taxes, put up with the complaints, and deal with the neighbor trespassing from those new neighbors. Those areas are now unrecognizable as former farmland, and I remember them being in crops. I have been blessed to live here for over 30 years and raise a family. A housing development directly abuts our property. We do not want to be like the Show Horse Farm, and I do not think my neighbors do either. Farmland, whether it is fallow, crop-farmed, or supporting livestock, is a precious resource that cannot be resurrected once it is gone, as I have witnessed. I ask that serious thought and consideration be given to avoid setting a precedence of approving a variance that removes more farmland from the landscape. And I really question the 10 acres that is being cut out, because really what they're doing is they're opening up more opportunity to split it again and again, when you look at how the lot is laid out. It makes no sense to put that 10 acres there, you would put it at one end of the property or the other end of the property. Here, you're putting it right in the middle of the property, you've got that little cutout, and you've got all of that. They're actually opening up the door for in the future, cutting up more property. And what guarantee are we going to have, that that, we aren't going to be standing here a year from now, two years from now, or even five years from now? Looking at another proposal with another house. As Michelle stated, when Hidden River came in, they have caused nothing but problems for my family. We can't even have a party, a gathering, a deployment party for my daughter, without Stearns County finest being called in because we, we were shooting. It's within our right, and we can legally do that, we're, we're, we have a great shooting range set up. But no, we get the cops called on us every time we turn around. We had them build on our property, we've had them kill our fields by throwing their grass clippings over there. We've had them park property of theirs on our property, and have to ask them to remove it. There is no respect, and it's very difficult, and as I said, I witness this happening down in the cities, I've been out here for over 30 years. It kills me to see this continue, 'cause one at a time, that's what we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, come on up.
I'm Holly Coens, 909 Isabel Avenue, Clearwater. All we are wanting to do is to build a forever home for our kids, that's all. And it really, it, it, we're not going to be disturbing anybody. We're not going to be complaining. No one farms that land. It's not been farmed for seven years. We don't plan on building tomorrow. We're waiting a couple of years, and it's not going to affect anybody. Like they said, Hidden Rivers is over there, that took up farmland. Really, there's nothing that's going to affect anybody. There's no other farmers that are using, I think, the other side of that line. I don't know which, there's the road, and then you take a left down towards Hoversens. Nobody farms that. And nobody farms the land that's behind it, so how are we going to disturb any neighbors? We're not going to throw parties, we're not, we're not that kind of people. But again, it's not happening tomorrow. It's a few years out. I, I think it would be okay. I would appreciate it. I mean, if anybody, they're not making any more land, that's the thing. They're not going to be making anymore, so if someone can purchase a piece of land, I mean, why not? Let them enjoy it. So, thanks.
Thank you.
You know, I'm not really opposed to neighbors, Ray Gregwire, I live on the farm next door, and it, uh, the, the biggest problem we have is, uh, traffic. We drive equipment up and down the road, and I've said this before, it's a narrow gravel road, it's crowned. Every year, people go off the road, we pull them out, sometimes it's their own fault, sometimes it's icy, it's not sanded. There, uh, you know, you put one at Tanegra Lot in, and there'd probably be more. Years ago, I was driving a tractor up the road, and I had a load of silage. I turned to go in the driveway, and a lady with a car full of kids went under the bucket. Drove right into the bucket, full of silage. If I hadn't had it up in here, 'cause it was full of silage, it would have gone through her windshield. I mean, it's a gravel road, it has semi-traffic on it, we drive tractors up and down it. If there are neighbors, I hope they're careful, but I think before Linden Township continues to put houses around farms, they have to consider that, you know, we're operating equipment, and it's not really, uh, the safest place to put them, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. All right, um, we are, yeah, we've got a couple of, just so, keep it quick if you can.
Yep, I, I guess I just wanted to, you know, ditto what they had said about, um, complaints from Hidden River, uh, on the farm, even when I lived there also on the farm. Uh, having to, um, put up with people talking about the smell, and, um, yeah, it was, um, quite often, so whether it was prior to, um, the gentleman from Linden Township, but that is very true, especially when it was a newer addition, it was a lot of complaints, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Vicki, you,
Yes.
you came back up here, you said you did have that, uh, building credit on that piece of parcel?
Yes.
And did you said, did you have, did you exhaust conversation between selling or?
Yeah.
The reason I ask, because Holly just said they were waiting, they said they would maybe be waiting for a number of years, and I, and my understanding is that you'd have to wait approximately three years before you could build.
Correct.
So have you exhausted that discussion?
Um, no, not for myself, um, because, uh, the reason why is up until last month, we thought it was, um, not, didn't hold any value at all. But since the last meeting, also, uh, received some information, and just from the meeting last month, that it actually does hold some value, which, um, we didn't, I know, so, and that opens up, uh, some different avenues for us also that, yep, thank you.
I promise this week, Darlene Dillon, 5.3 at Coker, five, Vanadil. Um, yes, I ditto my sister. Um, we grew up with the neighbors complaining about the animals, the smell, the tractors hauling manure out to the fields. I mean, it's just, it, it creates more, and with, even I noticed today, uh, when I picked up my dad, to bring him, the traffic on 44 is surreal. We have a curb, I, I, I thought the one truck was going to go right off the curb, and it's like, you know, you get more people out there, more billings, that's what's going to happen. I mean, farmers are going to be pushed out. I, I hope you take it all into consideration.
Thank you. All right, then we will be ready for, uh, do you have anything new? Okay, real quick, and then we got, we gotta, do we have any more you want to speak yet to? Okay, all right, go ahead, we'll keep it moving here.
Oh, um, with that, the smell thing, we live in town, and there is farms next to us in Clearwater. And we've never complained, nobody's ever complained in there. So, with that, we are not going to complain. We know what it's like, okay? And for that, in building entitlement that she was talking about, hers is on a swampy area. So, I mean, I don't, that's, that's theirs, yes, but they really can't build, I don't think, on that, 'cause it's swampy, wetland. But, and, and for traffic, we drive with farmers all the time. I own a business, I know what to do, I know what to look out for. I'm not going to go up and ride somebody's booty. So, with that, I'm, some people are dumb. Okay? Just plain and simple. So, yeah, thanks.
All right.
Hello, my name's Darryl Carlson, and I have no idea what you guys are talking about, 'cause I don't understand the verbiage. But I live right across the street at 422 155th Street. You know, and they say they haven't been farming, but I'm pretty sure they've been planting corn there every year. You know, and the deer come through there every night to the back of my property. You know, and, and I just think it'd be a, a hindrance. You know, I'm, I'm not for it, I saw it once.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do have some comments I received this, late this afternoon. From Brad Lindberg, 1548 713th Avenue, South Haven. He was opposed, he's got a small egg operation nearby, they haul hay on the road multiple times a day. They shouldn't be breaking up egg land, concerned with increase in property taxes. Doesn't like the transferring of building entitlements, and we shouldn't start that precedence. And he would have the option to sell land to another farmer for egg purposes instead of residential purposes. Those were her, his comments.
Thank you. All right, so we have public testimony from the last month, we have more testimony from tonight and today. I think we have a lot of testimony, motion to close public hearing.
We'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
All right, motion by Rich?
Second, Jason Winerman.
All right, all those in favor of closing public hearing, say aye. Aye, all those oppose? All right, so, any further discussion on this item before we go to finding a fact? I have a little bit, um, you know, obviously, planning commission's here to try to, you know, resolve land use conflicts. Uh, we had the meeting last month, and, and the proposal was up to, to rezone a good chunk of that, and the feedback we heard was, uh, the issue is with multiple residences and plating, um, not necessarily one home. Seems like a month has, has had an evolution of thought, at least from what I, I've observed, uh, from comments of, of people, uh, which is, it's a little frustrating as you try to, try to eliminate these, these conflicts, um, when the, the paradigm changes, so. Just an observation, I'm not sure if I'm the only one that, that caught that, but, um, it seemed like there was a changing of sentiment.
I have a question related to rezoning for, um, the residential. If there's, I don't know exactly where the feedlots are, and adjacent to the new proposed. My, my question was related to if it is rezoned for residential, does that affect any of those adjacent egg operations, if they wanted to do structures or anything like that? Will they be too close, will they have additional setbacks?
So the requirement for a non-egg zoning district is to be 350 feet from, uh, registered animal feedlot. So, what they're proposing now meets that, and actually, with the reduced 10-acre one, they would meet the 500 or 700-foot setback too. So, um, by rezoning- So, um, by rezoning this, that won't impact the feedlot's ability to add another barn or, or do something like that with what today's setbacks requirements are.
We talked in depth with that, Heidi and I did. It wasn't mapped to quarter this out over time. We talked about all this.
Thank you. Any other discussion items?
I do have the concern about, uh, the placement of the lot. It does look like, you know, in the future, it is situated that it could be advantageous for multiple splits in the future. I like seeing that if we do an orderly growth, it'd be on the outside edges, not in the center.
Mike, just, just question here, how would you, where would you propose that if the building site, with their proposed building site, how would you zone that differently? You know, if, if you have the, they had kind of identified the previous meeting where they're hoping to, to build. And it, this, to, I'm just looking at the opinion, I wanna, it looks logical based on the feedback that was discussed last month. Um, but I was just kinda curious. I don't know that that would've worked, um, any other way, and maybe you guys, maybe you wanna speak to that.
So, I don't know if you're able to turn on contours or not, but that, that is the highest elevation, that right on the, uh, southeast corner of those trees, and about the nicest place to put a home. Not to mention to the northeast of there a little bit, and Iran can attest to this, but that, my understanding, was an old gravel pit years ago, so it's not, it's not suitable farmland.
I were actually, um, I like the location of where the R-ten is because it makes it harder to do splits in the future. So if you cluster it to one side, you just step across the parcel. Here, if you're gonna cut an R-ten, you're getting funky cuts. So they're gonna be real ugly, real fast. So I, I, I actually think this division makes future rezoning in this not fun.
And I, I would just like to make comment also, I, looking at this map, it's, I don't know if we can find that. You can't, you can't get to it, okay? I'm, I'm, I'm looking at all the smaller parcels and the developments and whatever has gone on. But Township Commissioner or Advisor made a comment about they're looking at redoing your comp plan. And that is, when that happens, that's when the citizens really need to get involved because it's your township. You have a lot to say, so what happens, how you wanna see that grow or maintain that agricultural business atmosphere. And, and that's the time, I think, you grab control of what's going on with everything there. So, um, I'm just, we're all talking about possibility of subdividing and whatever else. But depending when you do your comp plan, that will probably be addressed.
All right, any other discussion on this item or questions for the applicant or staff? As I'll go to finding the fact. Um, so one is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not? We are re, this proposal is to rezone, um, not so much for the intended uses, for a building entitlement, um, which are limited in egg zoning districts. Uh, we've been seeing a lot of these, um, on egg property. More so than in this particular instance, it's typically to preserve family farms is, is what our trend has been if we, we look at it, so. Um, being consistent, this is one of the tools that's been used to, to limit growth in agricultural areas. Particularly when zoning in larger chunks like, or, uh, rezoning to something that's a larger chunk. Therefore, to me, it's, it's consistent. Are there any other opinions on that? Share away if you have them. Otherwise, we'll go to two. Two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county list applicable sections?
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, I, I would say that it does, um, you know, under agricultural goals, this particular proposal, um, you know, contains the areas of highly valued agriculture land or, or economically viable animal agriculture operations. Um, the woods there, from what I saw, is, is very thick. Um, and the other ground, I believe, is probably some surface CRP land. Uh, so none of the areas tillable or used for agriculture at this point. I think it's.
I apologize. Do you need me to repeat what I was saying?
Okay, um, I, I just, the makeup of the particular lot with the rather thick woods and some CRP ground, um, I, it's not taking away from the agricultural use that is in the area. Um, and then also, um, under, um, living goals of the, uh, county comprehensive plan. And I would also add that it's, uh, consistent, appears to be consistent with the Linden Township comp plan, which was approved by that body.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add the agricultural use policies, uh, goal number one, which is primarily land uses should be ag-oriented. The way this site is laid out, they've done a good job protecting the primary ag land on the site. Um, and seeming to minimize disturbance with the location they have selected.
Good, thank you, gentlemen, for those comments. Three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I, I believe that it is. I mean, there are other, uh, residential sites within a reasonable proximity, uh, to this proposed project. Um, so it, it, I, I don't know if I see the traffic issue that was talked about as being that significant to the area.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah, I think this is one you could argue either way, right? Is the zoning consistent? I mean, it depends how, uh, large of a, a circle you draw around the property, but certainly it's not a complete violator of what you, you see in that area right now.
I do, I do feel that it, uh, it does not, uh, is not compatible. It's shown with the feedlots and the public input.
Yeah, good. Uh, uh, thanks, Mike, for that comment, because I, I do agree that this can be looked at a couple of ways, so. Good. Couple thoughts on that one. Four, how has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, not applicable for this site.
I'm, I'm sorry, Jason.
Not applicable for this.
Yep, thank you. All right, and then five, any other issues pertinent to this matter?
Uh, just a couple. So this was a continuation from the previous one. So the Linden Township did recommend approval of this request. Um, this is also the second shot at this. The original one was they were gonna rezone to four parcels, which would've given additional three. Um, the applicant came in with a much reduced proposal. So I think they, they did their best to meet local concerns and needs.
Yeah, thanks, Jason. Yeah, based on feedback too from that, that first meeting, thus the continuation. I know there's some revisions made. Rich?
Mr. Chair, uh, under other, I would like to add, and we've done this before with other parcels, and that is to acknowledge if this is changed to a residential lot, the purchasers accept that they're gonna hear agribusiness activities. They're going to have the smells of agribusiness activities and they need to accept that because of the location.
Yeah, thanks, Rich.
Mr. Chair, and then I, I would, uh, think we should acknowledge the testimony. So I think we should say that there was considerable, uh, and concerning testimony to maintain the agricultural area.
Yeah, 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 good, well-stated, Joe. There, there's a lot of input and feedback on this one, which is always good, um, to get that. All right, um, there were some discussions about traffic generation impacts, uh, what that would be based on, on farm use and equipment and practices, so. Anything else on that one? Otherwise, you'd be ready for a recommendation.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I recommend the planning commission submits a recommendation for approval of the rezoning to an R-ten from the A-40 for the ten acre parcel under question.
All right, thanks, Jason. Do you have a second?
Dave Benford, District Two, Iowa's second.
All right, so motion by Jason, seconded by Dave, uh, to recommend approval. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
All right, so we have, you guys have that, it's one, two, three, five to one, yep, with Mike. And Mike, uh, you wanna share your thoughts, so Joe can bring that back to the board?
I just feel, I just feel with the public comments and it's just, uh, I get a bad gut feeling about it, it's just opening up the gate.
All right, thanks, Mike. Good. Joe, you good there? All right, so motion to recommend approval will go to the county, uh, board meeting, and that is November twenty-eighth. I just handed a slip on that one.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry. The county board meeting may not be the, we've gotta notice that the rezoning, so it's actually gonna be, we'll determine and let you know what that date's gonna be.
I'm gonna, I, yeah, check with staff, there we go. That's oh for two tonight, boy. Yeah, we'll give it a shot, all right. So, that, uh, we'll move to agenda item number three, and that's to consider a conditional use permit request submitted by Dean Corner, uh, Painesville, Minnesota, according to section ten point two point four A of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance four thirty-nine. The request is to change the use of the property from an eating and drinking establishment to a residential dwelling. Property under consideration is part of Government Lot Two, lying east of Eden Lake and west of County Road Nine in Section twenty-five of Eden Lake Township. Property address, one, five, four, four, five, County Road Nine, Eden Valley, Minnesota. Uh, real quick roll calls of, roll call of members who visited the site. I'll start with you, Jase.
I did not.
All right, uh, Dave?
Yes, I did.
All right, I've been there multiple times, um, everyone laughs, it was like for, yeah, anniversary parties and stuff. All right, Mike?
Yes.
All right, Tara?
No.
And Rich?
I was there.
All right, very good. Um, with that, we'll come back and have you guys do introductions here shortly. Uh, we will have, Heidi, you're doing the staff report on this one? Perfect.
Okay, so this is a conditional use permit to change, uh, the use of the property. So it's been Dino's Lakeside Ballroom for almost twenty years. Um, the, Dino's closed in late twenty twenty-two. The property is zone residential, it's residential ten, so it was illegal non-conforming use. Um, the restaurant, uh, existed prior to zoning. And the way the ordinance is written, if the use ceases, um, it needs to be dealt with. Uh, so if they want to change the use, then from a non-conforming use to any other use, then they're required to get a conditional use permit to do that. So the request is to convert the use from the restaurant facility, eating and drinking establishment, to a residential use. So, like we said, it's on Eden Lake, so it's, uh, within the shoreline overlay district. In addition to it being a, a non-conforming use for zoning, it's also a non-conforming structure for setbacks, but it was built back in the forties, I believe, so long before there were setback requirements. Um, they have certified the septic out there. They are, they have a proposal to be at forty-five percent impervious lot coverage, that's what they're grandfathered in with. Um, so they, there's a survey in your packet that shows what will get revegetated to get back to that forty-five percent in the event that it does, uh, change back to a residential property. Proposed conditions we have for this, um, number one, so related to the impervious lot coverage, is to have the about thirty-two hundred square feet of impervious removed, um, by July first and outlines the requirements for getting that revegetated. And then we'll want a financial guarantee for that to ensure that it's done. So those are the two conditions at this point. This one, and, um, Dean and Bonnie can probably speak to this a little more too. We will be delaying bringing this to county board until the January meeting. The way with the non-conformity, the way it works is they still have another month and a half or, or so to try to find a, a restaurant buyer and keep it as a restaurant. Before that use has to cease altogether. So we're gonna delay having the county board act on it until that timeframe expires, because once this is acted on, if it's approved, they can't go back.
Yeah.
So it, it's one of those things we're trying to accommodate with that timing, so. That's all that I have.
Very good, thank you. If you guys wouldn't mind stating now your name and address for the, the record.
We are Dean and Bonnie Corner. Uh, the address of the Eden Lakeside Club is one, five, four, four, five, County Road Nine. Our home address is, uh, one, seven, nine, four, six, Dove Creek Road in Painesville, and also in Eden Lake Township as well.
Yeah, very good. Anything you wanna add to what Heidi had to say?
Um, no, not right now, I just, that, uh, we, you know, it was a surprise to us that, um, you know, we understood the, the setback from the lake and all. And, uh, but it was a surprise to us that, you know, the, that we would have to, if the building sits, um, unused for a year, that we would have to remove the structure. So the county says we have to remove it, the bank, who we're still making payments to, says we can't tear it down.
Yep.
So this is, uh, you know, and the only way we can work with this is to get the, uh, a two-year extension on it. The only way we can work with this is to get a two-year extension on it through the conditional use permit.
Yeah, yeah. Kinda rocking a hard place.
Yeah.
Yep. Got it. Well, thank you for that. Uh, any questions for the applicant or staff on this one?
So a couple of questions for staff. Um, so if we approve the conditional use permit to change it to a residential dwelling, does that open all of the uses in the area, or can they just do a residential building?
Um, I, it would be just being able to use it as a residential dwelling is what this conditional use permit, which would be in conform, would be conforming with the residential ten zoning district. Dwelling's allowed use in the residential ten district, so it'd become a conforming use then at that point.
Okay. Um, and the second question, do they have to rebuild the house within the restaurant footprint?
It would be their option. They can convert the restaurant into a dwelling. Any expansion because of the setback limitations, they really can't do any structural changes to it, but they can do whatever they want on the inside to make it a dwelling.
Would they have the potential to make dwellings floral inside?
No, they would not.
Just, just one?
Just one, yeah, because of the lot size, it's not large enough to have a duplex or triplex or anything with it being on the lake, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blankish, you took my que, one of my questions. The other question I have is the property to the north. It, it appears that there's a property line through that building. Is, is that correct? Is there a property line?
That happened when, uh, both property owners were family members and it was done a long, long time ago, before we had it.
So Mike?
When we bought it, we were, decided to be good neighbors and let them keep it there.
My question would be with this, would, is there any way you'd wanna maybe change that at this time?
Being the title.
Um, I don't know, I mean, I've thought about it, be, you know, because it would probably be easier to sell it without it sticking over the, the property line.
Yeah, we looked into it with our surveyor, but it'll cost about five thousand dollars and.
Just to, just to go to the.
I talked to Ralph and, um, his opinion was. I talked to Ralph, and his opinion was the owner of the, well, and his opinion was, he didn't say no, but he was waiting if there was a, if the potential buyer would make a big fuss about it, he would probably work with us. And he might go in half on that.
Okay. Yeah, and it just gives us an opportunity to maybe clean up something that would avoid a problem in the future.
It'll be just less acreage for us. I don't know, like if someone would want to build a building, like a garage, because there's no garage there, would that be, you know, it's just frustrating for us to try to sell it.
Yeah. Anything else that would be done? There would need a variance, right?
Yeah, if they wanted to increase impervious lot size, setbacks are tight to be able to build.
They have a pile of impervious now, right?
Yeah, and they've got to get rid of some, so.
We did have a potential, someone who was interested in buying it last May and wanted to add like a shed or garage to it. And there is a small portion up there. If we want, you know, on the northeast end of the property, where the county did tell us that we could put up to a 1,200 square foot structure, you know, that would work as a storage shed or a garage, you know, and still, you know, and the setbacks would have to be, you know, like 10 feet from the property line versus where the road used to be, what they'd say 65 feet from the center of the road, and that kind of eliminates any chance of putting in a garage. But the, you know, I have spoke with the township board members, and they said a variance would be possible. So, we have that going for us.
All right. Very good.
Just, so I understand, what, what is your desire or intent with the existing structure there? Are you looking to just keep it as is and, or tear a portion down, or the whole thing, and?
Well, we want to sell it.
Yeah, you want to sell it. Okay.
It's for sale. We want to sell it. We, we ran the Eden Lakeside Club for 10 years, and we had another restaurant that we ran before that for nine years. And we were both 65 years old. We're, we've had enough of the food service business and the 80-hour work weeks and the long hours. And we decided, we tried to sell it, couldn't, as a restaurant, couldn't sell it when it was operating, and we decided we're just going to close it down and try to sell it as is. So, right now, we still want to sell it.
Okay.
We don't want, us, I mean Bonnie and I, we don't want to remodel it or build it or make a home out. We have a home we like, you know, and we just want to sell it, put it behind us, and move on.
And so, maybe a follow-up to Jason's question, then if, if, and this might be for staff, but if someone were to buy that old restaurant building and tear it down, and to rebuild a traditional residence type thing, would they have to do it within the same footprint of that?
No.
And if they did that, would they have to do, would there be any setback changes for that new house?
Yeah, we would have to look at, if they tore that down and wanted to build something new, we would be looking at all the setback requirements. There may be a building line available, so they wouldn't have to meet the 100-foot lake setback. But for sure would have to be further back than what the current structure is, because the current structure's in the shore impact zone. So, it would for sure have to be further back at a minimum from the current structure, and then look at side property lines and, and road setback. All that would need to be evaluated, so.
But a buyer could come in, convert the existing structure to a residence without any setback change. Okay.
Yep.
Only if they tore it down and?
Right, or if they wanted, so it's a, you know, a hoop roof now. If they wanted to change that to a traditional, more traditional roof, that would require variance and going through that process. But if it was just all interior work, they wouldn't need any permits from us for that.
Thank you for helping me understand.
Yep. Cool. All right.
So, actually, just one more question. So, I pulled up the R-1 permitted uses. So, if they wanted to, somebody comes in and says, wow, I'd love to build a licensed daycare, family daycare. Would they need a new CUP? Or, because it's in the R-1, that's a permitted use?
Right, we would have to evaluate whatever they would propose. If it's a use allowed in the, it's currently residential 10, due to the size, we would be looking at R-1 uses.
R-1, yep, yep.
If they're proposing a use that normally requires a CUP, then yeah, they'd be coming back for a CUP.
But if it's a permitted use?
Then it would be, yeah, if it's permitted, it would be permitted.
So, they're just restoring everything to the R-1 permitted. Okay.
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Awesome.
Chair, yeah, that's a good question, Jason. So, if that was R-1, would, could a church buy that?
We actually had someone, a church person, yeah. And I told him no, because I wasn't sure.
I'd have to look and see what's, what the allowed uses are in the R-1 district. I know there was questions with it being for sale, whether it could be converted to any commercial use, which it can't be. It's not, it's not zone commercial. It's only, it's a pre-existing eating and drinking establishment, so it can continue as an eating and drinking establishment unless the CUP is approved, then it would go to residential. So, it's not, it currently isn't open to all commercial uses, only eating and drinking. And then, yeah, if this is approved, then it could go to anything allowed in the R-1.
So, according to our standard, the R-1, churches are conditional use.
So, it would be a CUP, and they'd have to meet those, all those performance standards, if that's possible.
Could be a potential buyer, though.
Might help.
So, your question makes me ask another question, you know, like if someone wanted to run a daycare out of there. So, if someone wanted to buy it, make it their home, but run a business out of their home?
CUP?
Would that?
I think, right, ID? Uh, right, right.
You know, in the residential districts, home occupations are allowed, so a business within there, but it can only be operated by people who live on the property. They can't have any other employees or?
Yeah. One other employee, no?
No other employees. It can only be people that reside on the property that are part of that business, and it would have to take place entirely within the structure.
But no employees?
No employees. Right, right. That's for what is allowed in the R-1 district for a home occupation. Yeah, any of the other uses, yeah, could, provided the performance standards of the ordinance can be met. I mean, that's going to be the ticket on some of those things. Yeah, so there's family daycare, group family daycare, bed and breakfast, home occupation, looking at things that are more business-related. Yeah, church would be a conditional use permit. A community building's a conditional use permit. School. Yeah, that's, I mean, it does open it up to a few of those, but not the full-blown, you know, commercial options.
Pretty good. Well, you seem a little stuck, but you have some options. It's a unique property. Sorry, didn't mean to do that. Okay, anything else? Oh, go ahead.
The, the driveway in there, is that township driveway, or do they have to have an easement? That was a question that some of the buyers were concerned about.
I, we have to defer.
Yeah, we've looked at that a little bit, because the township vacated the part that runs kind of along the southeast side. They vacated that part of the township road. So, I'm not exactly sure where the township road actually starts and stops on there. But that would be a question. I don't know if the surveyor can evaluate that.
The surveyor told me that if, if the road gets moved out, the county does not block you in. They can't block you in.
Right.
So, we should have a road going in there.
Right, so I don't know if there's an easement, if there was an easement. There should have been an easement put in place when that road was vacated, and I don't know if that happened, if the township required that at that point or not.
I mean, there is some language saying there's an easement, you know, at the time when the restaurant was still there, we were renting, or the previous restaurant owners, and we did as well rent parking lot space from the neighbor. And so, you know, it was, you know, but that was our easement. Then there was renting his parking lot space while we're not, we're not renting his space anymore, but we're told we have to have an easement. And I've been driving in from the township road on the north end of the property since then. There's been no problems with it with our neighbor, but and I've asked a couple of times, you know, I would like to know exactly where our easement is. I mean, how much, how wide of an easement do we have? How long is it?
Yeah. Praise, praise.
Because there's, there's some gray area here.
Yeah, at some point, it probably is going to make sense on this, as you're trying to sell, get it surveyed tight, and, because those are all questions a buyer's going to have.
Yes, and we've had to field a few of those questions.
Yeah. All right, cool. With that, let's go, unless there's anything else, we'll go to public hearing. Either you two gentlemen here in the public testimony? You are? Oh, come on up.
Where'd everybody go?
Yeah, is it right?
Mr. Chair, Bob Hig, Chair of Eden Lake Township. And we had a meeting on Tuesday night, and our planning and zoning and our supervisors, we all were in agreement of going forward with this to residential. And my understanding is the township, and this happened before Bob was on the board, but may I?
Yeah.
That I think we vacated up to here. This and this, this road is still township.
Okay.
It isn't, the one going north, we don't maintain that.
Maintain, it's a minimum maintenance.
Yeah, and, well, no, it isn't even meant.
Oh, it's not. It's just the township, but it's not maintained. Okay.
And the part coming back to the southwest, that was the part that was vacated.
Okay.
So, and as far as access or the easement to get to the property, Bob doesn't know that.
Okay.
So, it, but the building was built in 1948.
1948. I don't, I don't remember that year, but.
It's worth a million dollars, we were told.
It is, it is. It was a roller rink.
Really?
Built originally, it was built originally as a roller rink, you know, what Bonnie was talking about, the ceiling is all original, the original redwood ceiling from the 40s.
That's awesome.
When they could still harvest redwood. That was about a third cousin of mine that built that.
There's some cool stuff that could be done with that building. I hope it preserves. Hey, thank you. Yeah, appreciate you hanging, hanging in there. All right.
We will, not a problem.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Anyone else here from the public on this one? I'm glad I didn't just like do the whole, close the public hearing. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. All right.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Rich, close public hearing. Alls in favor, say aye. Aye. Alls opposed? All right. Very good. Any other discussion on this one before going to finding a fact? All right. One, is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, it is consistent with zoning ordinance 439, sections 4.8 and 10.2.4A.
Thank you, Rich. Two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county listed applicable sections?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I'm going to say it actually restores this to the comprehensive plan objectives. So, under the Lake Shore Living Policies, we have encouraged shoreline protection and restoration methods, which will be done by the restoration of the site. And the last goal, eight, bullet point two, has projects that are maintaining the neighborhood's residential characteristics by promoting compatible land uses. By returning this to R-1, the R-1 uses, we are restoring it to the compatible land uses. So, this is actually bringing it into conformance with the plan.
Giving you two points on that. That definition sounds really well done. Thank you. Three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not? I'm just going to, it's been there since, what, 1948, right? I'm going to say since 1948, it's compatible. I mean, switching it to R-1 gets it more consistent with the surrounding properties, but not a lot of change in, in current use. Four, how is the applicant demonstrated standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, we have the two conditions, and this will not be approved by the county board until they're both met, correct?
It will go to county board once the option for it to remain an eating and drinking establishment expires. That's when it would go to county board. So, it would likely be the January 2nd county board meeting at the end of the year.
But we can sell it as a, as a restaurant or event center?
It can, until, we need a complete application to re-license it by December 31st, is what it is, is what the requirement is. If we get that by December 31st, then the eating and drinking establishment can continue, and then we'll withdraw this request before county board on January 2nd.
Because we do have someone pending, or not pending, but looking at it to make it into an event center.
Okay, yep.
And one question on that. So, they have to provide the 125% escrow, right? Is that another?
Yeah, that's part of condition two, and that's to get the, so, they're currently allowed to be a 49% impervious if it remains eating and drinking establishment, because there was a variance approved for that back in 2000, I think. If it converts back to residential, then it needs to go down to the original 45%.
Is it an event center? Is that somehow different than an eating and drinking establishment?
It'd be a banquet hall, more or less.
Most likely serving food and beverage.
Yeah.
Yeah. We consider that a similar use.
Similar or same. Okay.
Yeah.
Rather than probably being open daily from whatever time it's.
Right, so maybe weddings or whatever, but it would be serving food and, yeah.
Yep. Very good. Any other issues? Oh, go ahead, Joe.
And they, you would have the option if that interested party, as far as the church would be concerned?
I'm sorry?
You, you, you had alluded that there was an interested party about a church?
Someone asked about a month ago, one of our realtors were.
And you thought, no?
Yeah, because we were told that.
If it was residential, it would be a permitted use, correct?
Yep, yep. Yeah, so for it to be.
With the CUP?
Right, with the CUP, it could potentially go to the church if they can meet all the performance standards.
Okay.
So, the, the existing CUP expires December 31st of this year, right? Is there any opportunity for us as the planning commission to recommend the board extend the CUP for a period of six months?
I was going to ask the same question.
To be, to still be sold as a restaurant?
So, the, yeah, the ordinance says you have 12 months once a use is discontinued. After, if it's been discontinued for 12 months, then the use shall cease and come into conformance, and the structure would need to be rem- into conformance and the structure would need to be removed if it's, since it's not conforming.
So we can't do that, but the county commissioners could, can't they?
Well, one question I had was, how much time did you, like, how long have you known that you needed to do that?
We found out this summer.
Which is still hard to figure out, to how to buy and sell it and transfer it and do all of that within a couple months, I understand.
Mute interest rates going to six, seven percent?
Yeah.
Yeah, great timing.
We can chat with the county attorney's office on that option. If the board has the authority to waive that 12 months or extend that 12 months, we can chat with them on that.
So that would be a board level decision?
You'd have to be, yeah, it's, it's ordinance, so they, you're the only ones that can change it. But we could recommend it, so that's a...
Yeah, I mean, as was indicated, it's, it is a very unique property, it has potential for different uses, and to give the seller time to come up with a reasonable plan seems appropriate and reasonable.
Yeah, I agree, Dave. Can we formally recommend that and still vote on this tonight? Yeah, okay, good, so we can proceed.
Be one of the conditions.
All right, and we'll maybe make that part of our issues pertinent to this matter, or final thing, is that the planning commission would like to recommend an extension of six months to the county commissioners if applicable?
And, and this is, it could still be sold as a restaurant?
Yeah, we're trying to get you more time to sell it as a restaurant, yeah.
That would keep, give us a bigger pool of potential buyers.
For sure, and not have you...
And the, and the original application that we came here for was to extend it for two years that we wouldn't have to remove the structure.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we don't, well, we can't do that either.
Yep, yep, good. No, right, the banquet, not in front of that. Good, okay. Well, with that, then a motion would be in order. Unless you have more comments, thanks, Jason.
Just a question, Joe, before we move, if the planning commission provides a recommendation to the board to extend the CUP deadline, do you want us to give a recommendation of a timeframe, or do you like that to be left up to the board?
I'm gonna ask two questions back to you, what would be your recommendation for timeframe? The other question, do you think what would be the negative of giving the extension? What would be the negative?
I mean, my, my gut is saying, and I think Tara sort of backed me up, six months?
I would actually go a year. Because by the time you try to find a buyer and then work through all the county questions, you're out a year if you're gonna try to keep, and that's tight.
And then, interest rates being what they are, it might not be a favorable environment right at the moment to take on a remodeling, but maybe a year from now? Could be.
And then on the second part, I, I can't, in the 30 seconds, I can't think of a negative.
The only, the only negative I could see is that if it would appear to be an attractive nuisance, so that if it would be abandoned and have the opportunity to arson or something like that, that's the only negative I can see. So that if you would shut off the plumbing and the heating so that it, you know, would become undesirable. But, but the idea of extending it so that you could make a sale and, you know, benefit the community and have an establishment that is warranted, that'd be that only positive.
In a lot of cities, this would be like a historic preservation deal, they wouldn't let you tear down, so I would go as long as you could, but that's me. And sorry, I've got fifth grade basketball practice starting right now, I'm supposed to be at, and doors were locked, so I...
I guess that, you know, it, to me, it's, it's, it's only a benefit to the seller if it would help them come up with a plan for the property. If they don't want it, then why would we recommend it? So it'd be, just, I think it'd maybe be up to them to tell us if that's what they want, the option to be able to, or to have more options.
And Mr. Chair, I would like to solicit the feedback from the township.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
A comment on the, oh, I'm sorry. Of having arson or people coming around, the owner of the other property lives real close and he's very diligent of what goes on around there, so...
That's a good...
I wouldn't, that wouldn't be a big problem with anything happening there. Okay? And as far as extending that a year, Bob would like to have like two years, you know, because we're already in November, it's, things move slow, but thank you for just coming back up.
Do you think that the township would be tickled if it would stay as a...
Oh, yes, oh, yes, yeah. But township, the city of Eden Valley, that's all, so the whole area.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, there's, you know, people from, not just Eden Valley and Eden Lake Township, but Cold Spring Watkins, Litchfield, Paintsville, Richmond, the whole, every town around there, people would love to see it stay open.
District three would appreciate it.
Yeah. But we just, we just burned out and had to, had to close it down.
Everyone's allowed to retire. All right, cool, so do we have a recommendation? Or anything else?
Any of us?
Go ahead.
I mean, I recommend that we, a recommendation to the county board to extend the CUP, I would actually say two years, because that's what the original, like you tried to do was, and they can always reduce it if they are in favor.
I'd also go, I'm in favor of two years. But... Yeah, we have to take action on this yet, too, so that's our, but that'll be our...
Is the two years, is this a condition of approving, or...
Two years is a recommendation, we can't do anything about that, but what we're doing is making a recommendation to the county commissioners, since it's an ordinance, they're the only ones that can change it. And so then they can vote on that at their next meeting and decide what they want to do. We still will want to vote on this as it stands, in case it...
It's not a condition to approve.
It's not a condition, it's just a recommendation.
Two separate recommendations you'll be making, right?
Like that, yep. It's a recommendation we're making in our other issues pertinent to this matter, and then we're gonna vote on the item yet, so...
So I will second Tara's recommendation on the, for the county board to consider an extension of two years.
And we can do that whole thing, we'll just do a quick roll call, so, I mean, Tara's in favor, Jason's in favor of that recommendation. Is anyone not in favor of that recommendation? Let's call it unanimous, perfect.
And then, and then the second recommendation is to recommend the board, wow, make this an easy one, why don't you? Change the use from the eating and drinking establishment to a residential dwelling with the R1 standards and uses.
Yes, per hour, per...
And with the two conditions.
To consider, to use, request, to request to change the use of the property from an eating and drinking establishment to a residential dwelling.
With the two conditions.
With the two conditions, and seconded by Dave. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye, all's opposed? All right. Good luck with the project.
I have one quick question.
Yeah.
For, let's say for, we get someone that really wants it, has a residential in, in this two, year or two, whatever.
You have your approval.
Your decision.
Your decision.
So we can then, you could say, let's go residential, that's what they want, and we just bring this forward? Okay.
Yep, you're approved for that.
Good to know. Right, right, yep.
Yeah.
Right, but if it, if it's allowed that way...
From January, right?
Yeah. What, what sort of a price tag is on the property?
Right now, it's listed with a realtor for $300,000.
Cheap, cheap.
Oh, yeah, it would make a great home, I mean, if someone wanted to...
290 feet of lake shore.
Yeah, if someone wanted to invest, you know, the $300,000 and maybe another couple hundred thousand, you'd have a million dollar property. Yes, the original hardwood floor is there.
All right.
And the dance floor is still like that, so...
You guys will have some options, eh? Very good, good luck with that, hopefully everything goes well.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, agenda item number four, and that's minutes for this, both the September meeting, I guess we'll do that one first.
Move to approve the September planning commission meeting.
Thank you, Dave, second by Rich, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then let's talk about October minutes, do we have any corrections or recommend approval on that one?
I would like to abstain from that since I wasn't in attendance.
That's a really good call.
Who would also...
I as well.
I'm, I'm gonna recommend approval of the minutes, Jason, will you second? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that leaves three of us. Okay, any other discussion, anybody? Jason, I'm gonna give you member of the night award, give you the football or the gavel. Couple really good recommendations and citations, so, is there anything else anyone wants to talk about?
I think the, the...
Thank you, guys.
The, I don't know, one, the second, or the third one that we talked about tonight, the one that was more contentious with Linden Township. I have literally been on both sides of that discussion within the last five years, being the seller or the buyer, and it's really hard to make those calls, and I think, I think the process was followed, they went through the township, they went, they did all this, I think that's as much as the planning commission can do in those cases, and I totally understand what you're coming from with the landowners, because I've also been there. So I, that was a rock and a hard place.
It is a hard one, I totally agree, I'm glad, Mike, you shared your opinion that you did, because you can look at it multiple ways, I mean, there's no right or wrong.
I think part of the problem there is the way the township approaches it.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, if it's on the consent, I won't take it off the consent, just to let the county know that, you know, it's a contentious issue.
Yeah, yeah, honestly, though, my other...
You know, and I, I'm, I'm learning all this still, but I, I didn't really see the significant distinction between the first request we had tonight and the second one, as far as, you know, the...
The only thing is, the first request would have been, they would have had three lots.
Yeah, right, and this is, this is one, and that's my point. The first request tonight.
You're, you're spot on. That was platting, not the zoning, but we rezoned that one just like a month or two ago.
There really wasn't a difference, and I think that's why we, that's personally why I went the way that I did, because I, I understand the plight of the landowners and the surrounding landowners, but at the same time, like, how can you be that different because people were upset? It's just hard, that's what the, that's what the ordinance is there for.
For, for one building site, I, I didn't understand the feedlot and the traffic and the noise, and it's, they're, the buyer's taking the risk of developing that, and I don't, I...
One of the things, I don't know if you saw it in the last test, like, if you watched the last meeting or anything, but one of the things that I was frustrated with was that feedback that we received last time is they didn't want a housing development. A lot of people stated that, and they said, oh, we'd be fine with one house, and then literally tonight, it was, now I don't want a house anymore, and, and now that, I struggle with that.
I agree with you, because they said that they were comfortable with one, but not three.
Yeah.
The one thing that bothers, bothers me, and it is, you probably shouldn't look at it, but I have a problem with the, the buyer or whatever. We've, I've, I've had dealings with them.
All right.
I, I, I see four, I see three more coming down the road.
Well...
But, well... I was gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, no, we, we can do that, I think, yeah, we're good. Jason, you get to hit the gavel tonight, you're member of the month, perfect, thank you, meeting adjourned.